Mayor, it's 5:30.
All right, thank you. This time, I'd like to ask all of you to join me in prayer. Oh Lord, mercifully receive the prayers of your people who call upon you and grant that they may know and understand what things they ought to do and also may have grace and power faithfully to accomplish them through Jesus Christ our Lord who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit and God now and forever. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. And for those of you who are watching online, we welcome you as well. I'll now formally call the meeting to order, a regular meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which is duly posted. And the first item on the agenda is citizen communication.
Mayor, we have five citizens that would like to speak. The first one is Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive, Redistricting.
I'll defer to the talking.
Now is the time for citizen communication. And I'm going to ask you to speak now. If you don't want to speak now, then you may not get called on later.
Your Honor, last year when it was an election year, you realized that the law says add the item. You have to abide by law. It's government code 51511.
All right, the item is now. Item, so we'll go to...
Well, all you like is litigation so you can cost the taxpayers. That's what the election year should be about, that you cost taxpayers money. Let me speak about redistricting. Upon conclusion of last night's workshop, only two persons on the premises had an accurate response to the mayor's initial query about the time parameters for submitting the redistricting plan. When the census figures were forwarded, he was still days away from the roll. So the entire duration of having the pertinent data is encompassed during his tenure, yet neither Gabe nor the consultant he's presented have knowledge of the deadline for submitting Harlingen's redistricting plan. He stated last night, "You must take action tonight on submission." But he had no legal reason for that comment, nor did his consultant, who was right next to him. Mr. Rios chose not to bolster Gabe Gonzalez's assertion. Gabe may prove to be a worthy prognosticator, but the salient point is, it's a fundamental right, voting, that even the mayor tried to address last night, no matter how falsely. One by gallant soldiers of the main issue of a deadline is something unknown by Gabe, so he treats you like misled kids. Gabe serves one person on that dais, and it may surprise somebody about who it is. I'm not suggesting today that you all don't know the deadline for submission, but last night, there was plenty of time according to the December 15 meeting, and the mayor said to enjoy the holidays. So a lot of people did. Look around you at the people that are here tonight. They're not the typical citizenry that you're trying to get to come out to the polls. Y'all, the majority of you have tried to get more and more people enrolled, and not to take my time to have to take your time. Let's have other people come to the podium, but you're not doing it if you have voter suppression like the mayor suggests. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Christina Fonseca is running a little bit late, so I'm going to go to the next one. Mr. Jay Mead, 427 East Woodland Drive, Redistricting.
You stole my first line.
We're calling...
Hello, Gabe. Congratulations.
Mr. Mead, are we calling the second item?
No, I'm calling Mr. Jay Mead.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's me.
Ms. Fonseca didn't...
Let me clear this. Start again.
She's running late, Mayor, so she's...
She's running late, Mayor.
You ready to start your timer?
Okay.
Yeah.
Here we go. My name is Jonathan Mead. Most of you know me as Jay. I live at 427 East Woodland. I served three terms on the Harlingen City Commission. I'm concerned that there was no notice of these drastic changes being made to District Two and Three. I know some of you guys are big proponents of transparency, but I don't see it being practiced. So the maps have been not even published for people to see, but yet you want to, you know, go ahead and out expert the experts. So you have not solicited comments from those affected. As I understand it, the bottom line here is that you're taking a large segment of the voters out of District Two and putting them in District Three. You're robbing them of the right to participate in city elections this year. You see, District Three elected their commissioner last year. So now I and others will have to wait on voting for a commissioner until the year 2024, if you adopt Plans C or D. That's a far cry from being fair, don't you think? You hired an expert to redraw your maps, but now some of you think you are more expert than the experts. Please think about this and do the right thing. Thank you.
The next one is Mr. Tudor Yulehorn, 402 East Woodland Drive, Redistricting.
My name is Tudor Yulehorn. I reside at 402 East Woodland Drive in Harlingen. Mayor Boswell, commissioners, city manager, staff, and guests, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Since the city of Harlingen implemented single-member districts, I've lived in District Two. I served as city commissioner from District Two for two terms from May 2013 through May 2016. I'm addressing you today to state my objections to redistricting proposals C and D, which were just revealed to the public on Monday of this week. I live one block north of the city lake. My residence lies in the geographic center of the current district number two. Proposal C and D remove my entire neighborhood from District Two and place it in District Three, which comprises the Treasure Hills neighborhood. Since my residence lies in the center of the current district two and also in the center of District Two in both Proposals A and B, it appears that Plans C and D were specifically drawn to remove me and my neighbors from District Two. I will allow the audience to draw their own conclusions as to why my neighborhood would be removed from the district that I proudly served for six years as a commissioner. Additionally, if my neighborhood is removed from District Two, it will mean that I and my neighbors will not be able to vote for a city commissioner in May of 2022, as currently is the case. If my neighborhood is moved to District Three, I will have to wait until May 2024 to vote for a city commissioner to represent me. Rather than the normal three-year voting cycle, we will have to wait five years from when we last voted in May of 2019 to vote again. Any redistricting proposal adopted should ensure that all voters in the city remain on their current voting cycles, as would be the case in both Proposals A and B. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening.
All right, thank you.
The next one is Robert Liftwidge, 909 East Parkwood, District Mapping.
I'm going to deviate from the district mapping because we're under citizen communication, and that's not going to prohibit me from speaking outside of that. First of all, I just wanted to say that, Mayor, I didn't get a chance to say or attend the other meetings when Linebarger was on the agenda for approval for delinquent tax collection. And I believe that you, even though you don't have a vote, I believe you spoke on behalf of them and you advocated to increase the collection fee from 15% to 20%. And I don't understand why you would do that when the county only charges 15%. And, you know, the fact is that you've already had almost two decades of raising taxes on the citizens of Harlingen, and why you would advocate for a law firm who has the national reputation that Linebarger has, you know, we can go back and look as early as this year where they've lost a class action lawsuit in California for fraud, for fraudently treating the citizens of California. And when you pick and when the city picks a tax collection agency, reputation should have a lot to do with it. And the fact is that it shows that you just continue to fail the city and the citizens of Harlingen by advocating not only for higher taxes, for, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in higher taxes, and then try to avoid the fact that you're promoting the taxation, but then you want to increase the fee on the delinquency of those taxes. And Mr. Mesmer, I just wanted to say that nobody has forgotten that you tried to steal $100,000 in stock commissions from one of your customers, as has been represented on a federal website. And for your participation in this, it just shows that you guys are out of touch with the community.
Two minutes are up, Mayor.
All right, your two minutes are up. All right, are we going to get Ms. Fonseca?
I guess, is she here? Yes.
Okay.
My name's Christina Fonseca, and I reside in District Five. Over the last year, I have tried to become more involved and attentive in what's going on in my communities, specifically Harlingen. And last night, I observed my councilmen, you five individuals, in your exchanges with each other. And I don't think anybody would agree, or, sorry, disagree that that was not a productive meeting, much less that Harlingen is in good hands. Mayor Boswell, your charge is to facilitate the presentations and differing sides of debate without engaging in reviling of another member. Don't take the bait anymore with premises that set traps for derailment. It's your responsibility to see the atmosphere is free from intimidation by either member. It is with the power that you wield the gavel that maintains the democratic order, but where is your gavel, Mayor? Commissioner Reba, I hope that people in your district see how you're using the redistricting process to manipulate their elections, just to knock out your opponent out of the race. People will hear about this, and they will remember it in election time. Perhaps this is why the city council meetings are in such disarray. We citizens have been tolerating self-centered personalities in our leaders, and I say to you now that it is time to stop. Stop displaying contempt with each other, and at times, your own citizens don't get your eye contact. Harlingen deserves better and more respectful representation and considerate meeting decorum. I speak for others that are tired of seeing the aggression and the accusations and the fighting. Commissioner Pettis, most of what comes out of your mouth is very unconstructive. You are more argumentative than a teenager when no one wants to hear the regaling that you start when you're not getting your way. Your personal remarks are out of order, and comments under your breath are immature. Robert's Rules of Order stress that in a debate, you confine your remarks to the question. However, yesterday, you deflected the mayor's question to instead use the speaking opportunity to bring up a past argument unrelated to the issue at hand. Please stop it. You won. It's time to move forward because you're hurting yourself and you're hurting Harlingen. I hope you all take this seriously and remember the city you serve.
Two minutes are up, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Very good. Item one concludes the citizen communication. So item one is a presentation by Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson, LLP, Attorneys in Law, on the delinquent tax report for fiscal year starting October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the city staff and public. I'm pleased to present this presentation on behalf of my firm. With me tonight are Monica Solis, my law partner, and Mark Moody, a member of our firm. I wanted to start out with letting everybody know that when we are charged with collecting taxes, our main emphasis is working with the taxpayer. Secondary emphasis is getting the taxpayer's attention to be able to work with them. When we do this, we do this mainly through mailings, direct contact on the telephone or in person with property visits. So with that, I wanted to share with you, you know, I talked about the mailings. We do at least 10 mailings per year that are full-service mailings. They go to every delinquent taxpayer. In addition to that, we have smaller targeted mailings, depending on if businesses are delinquent or large dollar amounts, accounts, large accounts are delinquent. Those are more targeted mailings. So we do 10 a year. The reason we do 10 is we don't want to interfere with your October tax bill that is paying the current payments, asking for the current taxes to be paid, or in January, when the secondary reminder goes out, and we want to make sure that the taxpayers are paying your current taxes first and then the delinquents. But all the other months, we mail on behalf of the city. On the bottom of this chart, and in your report, is a snapshot of the litigation that occurred as of the end of the fiscal year. So total lawsuits filed, 277, totaling about $500,000. We had about 100 non-suits, meaning they were paid or they got into a payment agreement. So that was another $200,000. Judgments taken, we took 45 judgments, totaling about $83,000. Pending litigation, we have about $600,000 out there impending in about 250 accounts. We initiated 10 tax warrants, which are specialized mini suits on business personal property. So businesses may be, they're delinquent, and the statute of limitations for those amounts is considerably less than with real property. So we have to, when we see something really important on a business, like they might be going out of business, we need to initiate a tax warrant. Most of those, actually all of those, ended up in payment agreements. And then the pre-litigation activity, as of the end of the fiscal year, we had looked at about 72 accounts that totaled about $80,000 that we were looking to initiate in the next month. So that's your litigation summary. As far as collections are concerned, we had another great year of collections. Most of those are payment agreements or full payment. As you can see, three years ago, we collected a total of 587,000, roughly about 26.6% of your delinquent tax roll. Two years ago, we collected a little bit more, 641, and that's when COVID kind of started to peek its head, but you still had a pretty good collection year, almost 27% of your delinquency. And then last year, despite COVID, we had another good year of collections, 33%, total $773,000 in collections. That includes penalty and interest, as well as a base amount that is owed to the city. This chart is a little bit different, but it's kind of the same. In the middle of your fiscal year, the New Year's worth of taxes, those records are turned over to us. They're barely delinquent, but we assisted the city in collecting those. So in total, we collected almost $1.3 million, excuse me, $1.25 million for the city, including penalty and interest. Incidentally, we're having a really good year this year. Three months in, we just got the numbers today from the tax office. You're at about 11%. So last year, we hit 33. So with three months in, we're already a third of the way there. I talked about tax sales. Whenever we file a lawsuit, we try to work with the taxpayer, but when we can't, we do have to put up properties for sale. We put up 31 properties throughout the year. 21 of them sold. Not one homestead was sold. They were non-homestead properties. Again, we try to work with them, but you saw that we filed about 300 suits. We only took 31 of those to sale. 10 of them resulted in payment agreements, and so you're talking about another $75,000 or so worth of income. So other activities that we're performing, we represent the city in all bankruptcies. We're currently monitoring about 79, totaling about $44,000 in delinquent taxes. Payment agreements, we have 275 that we're working with, and those are moving targets. Sometimes we have 290, sometimes we have 240. They get paid on a monthly basis. But as of the end of the year, it was about $87,000. The mailing program that we have for the city will continue. We had one this past December, and we'll have another one in February and in March. We have another tax sale scheduled in March. In your packet is a list of all the suits that we filed. Again, we file suits, but our main objective is to get the taxpayer's attention. When they don't respond to a mailing, you know, we're sitting there showing, for one year, we're showing 10 mailings and no response. So when we don't have a response, we have no choice but to file a suit. When we get the suit, a lot of times, the taxpayers will come in and work out a payment plan, and that's what we want to do. We're trying to get their attention. And that is the report in a nutshell. Be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gavada?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Could you provide the same report for last fiscal's year, the previous one?
I gave you the collection numbers, which are basically, everything is built on the collections, so I gave you the fiscal year collection report.
What about the year before that?
I did not include that in there. I mean, I can't...
No, for future reference, I'm asking you...
I did not.
If you can provide that within a week, not two months or something like that. Can you do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
You want the last two, the last two?
Yes, that would be fine.
I'd be glad to.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Gavada? All right, thank you all very much for being here tonight. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 1, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Minutes are approved. Items three A through C, the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item four, consideration and action to accept a grant from American Electric Power in the amount of $5,000 for landscaping projects.
Mayor, members of the commission, Danny Lucio, our AEP rep, was instrumental in helping us obtain a grant for $5,000 for landscaping. We're going to use a bulk of that at the museum, and then the remainder will be used at the beautification for the canals at Victor Park. So staffers recommending accepting the grant, the amount of $5,000. There is no match.
Is there a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve.
The donation? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We appreciate the grant from AEP for the landscaping projects. It's a generous donation, and we appreciate that. So thank you all. Item five, consideration and possible action to approve a variance of the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinance as respect to the sidewalk escrows required for the proposed Raoul and Ivette Cano subdivision located along the west side of FM 507, approximately 750 feet south of FM 508, applicant Raoul and Ivette Cano.
Mayor, city commissioners, good evening. We are proposing a one-lap subdivision named Raoul and Ivette Cano subdivision. It's a one-lap subdivision for a single-family house. The location is along FM 507, about 700 feet south of FM 508. There's a few...
Sorry.
It's kind of, it's inside the city limits. It's kind of a rural area, and there are some houses, a few houses on the west side of the roadway, and the one-lap subdivision is located right there. That's a photo of the property. This went before the Planning and Sonning Commission, and they recommended approval unanimously to not requiring sidewalk escrows as part of the subdivision.
Anybody have any questions for Javier? You're finished with your presentation, right?
Yes.
Any other question? Is there a motion to approve the variance?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen City...
You skipped six.
I missed one. Item six, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to adopt and realign single-member district boundaries for the city of Harlingen based on the 2020 United States Census.
Mayor, members of the commission, we heard a presentation from Mr. Rios yesterday regarding the various plans. The first day to file for any candidate is January 19. That's 14 days away. So we want to have the district map adopted before candidates file for office. So we are recommending that we have one Plan A through D adopted today, and that we post, we'll post whatever plan is adopted on the web tomorrow. That's all I have for the presentation.
What does the commission want to do?
I make a motion to approve Plan C, to adopt and approve Plan C.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have plenty of discussion. We hired a fellow, where is he from, Gabe?
San Antonio.
Yeah. We paid him $10,000. He doesn't know anything about the politics of Harlingen, so he drew up Plan A. District Five has had, in the last 10 years, has had the greatest population growth relative to any other district. Using his plan, we would shift some of the Plan Five into Four, and then north end of Four into Two, and that would balance things out relatively fairly. But these other city commissioners don't believe in using an expert. They drew up their own plans. Lady sitting in the audience there has already told people that she was running in District One. Plan C, which Mr. Pettis has made into motion, and his cousin Frank Pointe has seconded, would prevent her from running. Now, that's legal to do, but it's not moral. Plan A is the moral thing because there's no, there's no politics involved. It's simple mathematics. And Plan C would deny people the right to vote for five or six years because they're moving people from one district to another and delaying their ability to vote in the next election, and that is voter suppression. And then we heard from Morales on Plan D yesterday, and his argument was right out of the Communist Manifesto by Karl Marx. He said that District Three has too many educated people, and they make too much money, and we have to move that and fix all of that. I said that? Yes, you did. But you didn't say Karl Marx. I did. I've studied him.
Mayor Mesmer's out of order.
He's out of order. I'm not going to recognize him, so please continue.
Okay. So Plan C is deliberate so that Richard Arriba does not have a declared strong, intelligent, common sense opponent, and that's what they want to do.
Is there any other discussion? I'm going to, I'm going to restate the concern that I expressed last night, and I still haven't, as the young lady so aptly put, I still did not receive a response to this question. I don't understand why this commission would think that it's okay tomorrow morning, about 1,000 voters in our city will wake up tomorrow thinking that they were going to be able to vote in this year's election, or not going to get to vote in this year's election. And I don't understand why that's fair to rob a large segment of our voting population of the opportunity and the right to vote for representation... of the opportunity and the right to vote for representation in this city when you don't have to do it. It's not necessary. You, you, it's not necessary to balance the districts. It's not necessary to adopt a constitutional plan, which would be, which would be appropriate for the city of Harlingen. You have two other plans, Plan A and Plan B, which would not do that, which would, any voters that are being moved from one district to the other would be moved into a, a district that has the same voting cycle. So, they would still get to vote for their city commissioner at the normal time that they get to vote. Now, this entire, two entire voting precincts are being disenfranchised and not allowed to vote in, in an election. And I, that, for any sense of common, common fairness, or decency, or morality, or desire to really represent the people of the city of Harlingen is not being accomplished by the adoption of Plan C or D. And so, I would urge you to think about not politics, but I urge you to think about the people of the community and whether or not this is what you think Commissioner, and Commissioner Pointe, who represents this district, ought to, ought not to support a plan that disenfranchises this many of its constituents from being able to vote in this election. I urge you not to vote for Plan C, not to vote for Plan D, not to disenfranchise this many people. It's not an insignificant or inconsequential number of people, and certainly, it's unfair to a declared candidate. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right, the motion carries. Three to two. Item Seven, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen City Code, Chapter Six, Article Four, Animal Control Division One, Generally, Section Six dash 117, Definitions Adding Community Cat, Section Six dash 168, Proof of Vaccination Required for Issuance, Removing Section, Section Six dash 119, Keeping Nuisance Animals, Amending Section Six dash 202, Procedure for Empoundment, Amending Section, Amending Section Six dash 204, Destruction of Unredeemed Animal, Certain Animals to Be Released Only to Keeper, See, Removing Section Six dash 205, City Ownership of Dogs and Other Animals Following Empoundment or Holding Period, and Adding Chapter Thirty-Three Community Cat Program. Is there?
Mayor, I apologize.
Josh?
I meant to, we respectfully request that we table this item. There are some items in this proposal that we still need to have legal review with us, so we respectfully request that we table this item.
Next.
Do we need to read the caption? It's an ordinance. Do you need to read the caption of the ordinance?
I will. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter Six, Article Four, Animal Control Division One, Generally, Section Six dash 117, Definitions Adding Community Cat, Section Six dash 168, Proof of Vaccination Required for Issuance, Removing Section 6.119, Keeping Nuisance Animals, Amending Sick, Amending Section Six dash 202, Procedure for Empoundment, Amending Section Six dash 204, Destruction of Unredeemed Animal, Certain Animals to Be Released Only to Keeper, See, Removing Section Six dash 205, City Ownership of Dogs, Other Animals Following Empoundment or Holding Period, and Adding Chapter Thirty-Three Community Cat Program.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Mayor, we're recommending that we table the item.
We made a motion to table, second. He asked to table.
Okay.
Josh made a motion to table because they're not done with the ordinance yet. There's some stuff that's to be.
Josh can't make a motion to table.
He recommended, he asked.
Huh?
Yes. He asked.
All right, did you, all right, there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item Eight, board appointments. Any board appointments?
I have none.
Board appointments?
None.
All right, that concludes the agenda for our meeting tonight, and so we are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.